Hello, everyone, and thank you so much for joining us this evening for the MCPS Board of Education Debate: Funding Our Future. My name is Esther Wells, and I am the president of the Montgomery County Taxpayers League. Thank you to our diverse group of co-sponsors in this county: Germantown Gaithersburg Chamber of Commerce, Moderately Moco, Clean Slate Moco, 480 Club, and the Parents Coalition of Montgomery County. A little background on how Board of Education members are elected. MCPS Board of Education is composed of two at-large members, who may live anywhere in the county, and five members, who must reside in the districts that they represent. The terms are staggered, with one at-large and two or three district members being elected every two years. Elections for Board of Education members are nonpartisan. All voters, regardless of the district they live in or party affiliation, may vote for one at-large candidate and one candidate from each district. The salary of our board members is $25,000 a year. Individual terms are for four years with no term limits, and the terms are staggered. In preparing for this Board of Education candidate debate, the sponsors extended an offer to all six candidates to attend. Two candidates chose not to attend: District 2 Natalie Zimmerman and District 4 Laura Stewart. Thank you to the four candidates: District 2 Brenda Diaz, District 4 Shebra Evans, At-Large Lynn Harris, and At-Large Rita Montoya for their time, engagement, and attendance today. The three elected candidates will be responsible for overseeing over $3.5 billion of MCPS's operating budget. Additionally, $350 million is spent by the county for crossing guards, CEOs, nurses, after-school programs, building schools, and debt service, which includes principal and interest repayment. To get us started, I'd like to share some information on the Montgomery County Taxpayers League. So again, I'm the president of the Montgomery County Taxpayers League. Joining us is our treasurer Gordy Brenney. Our board members is Ann Hingston, Joan Fiddler, and Lee Henry. To learn more about us, be sure to check our website. Check out our website at www.mctaxpayersleague.org. Or you can reach out to us on social media, MCTL on Facebook, or on X @mocotaxpayers. Or you can email me directly at presidentmcl@gmail.com. The objective of the Montgomery County Taxpayers League is to educate and advocate for taxpayers. We support appropriate actions to achieve greater efficiency and effectiveness in Montgomery County government and tax equity for Montgomery County taxpayers. Our vision is focused on performance and outcome. We host presentations like this with local elected and appointed officials on topics which have an impact on county's finances and consequently our taxes. We also take part in various public meetings and other advocacy. Please mark your calendar for our upcoming events on Wednesday, October 9th at 7:00 p.m. We will be hosting Councilmember Albernus, Chair of Health and Human Services. On Wednesday, October 23rd at 7:00 p.m., we will be hosting Councilwoman Balcom, who's a member of the Economic Development Committee and the Transportation and Environment Committee. And lastly, please mark your calendar for Tuesday, November 19th at 7:00 p.m. We will be hosting our new Superintendent of MCPS, Dr. Taylor. I'll include the registration links in the chat for these upcoming meetings, and I hope you can attend. Please also, if you're interested in being a member, go to our website. Membership is $25 a year, and we'd be happy to have you onboard. So now on to our debate format and ground rules. Each candidate will have one minute for first response and 30 seconds for rebuttal. If personal callouts are made, then 30 seconds for rebuttal will be available to that candidate to respond. Please raise your hand or your virtual hand to indicate your desire to give a rebuttal. All candidates can comment or rebuttal to any candidate's response regardless of contest or race. Each candidate will take turns being the first respondent to the questions. Now, we will begin with each candidate's opening statements. You have one minute. The order will be Brenda Diaz, Shebra Evans, Lynn Harris, and Rita Montoya. Over to you, Brenda.
Well, thank you to all of the hosts for having this wonderful Board of Education forum. I'm definitely very excited to be here. My name is Brenda Diaz. I'm running for MCPS Board of Education. And I want to tell you a little bit about me and why I'm running. I am the product of a gifted and talented program from the Bronx. I was in Ms. Lowsec's fifth and sixth grade class. And in that class, I was able to go to nonstop field trips, be in a rigorous academic environment where not only did the teacher push me, but administration pushed me, and my parents provided so much support. I was also part of a program that was an external organization that helped place me in a private school and then helped me get into Georgetown and then to later on get my master's degree. I mention all of this to say that these are the kinds of things that MCPS could achieve. If the Bronx in the 1980s can have students that are successful in this way, then there was no doubt in my mind that MCPS can achieve that same success for our students today.
Thank you, Brenda, and I will turn it over to Shebra Evans.
Thank you so much for having me. I am Shebra Evans, as it was stated. I want to thank the sponsors for having this forum and having this important discussion. I am a resident of Montgomery County and have been so for over 23 years. I have two daughters that have gone through the public school system. And my husband and I moved here 23 years ago because of the quality of the public schools here in Silver Spring, Maryland. And so I have been able to serve on the board for the past eight years, and I'm running for reelection. And I've gotten involved because of my commitment to equity and excellence. And when I first got involved, we were not providing as much access and opportunity for our students. And since I've been on the board, I can say that we've gotten really great at doing better. We're doing great in ensuring that students are able to go on to be college and career-ready. I'm looking forward to the questions to be able to answer and show you more about what I've done since I've been on the board. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And so next, we will turn to Lynn Harris.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for hosting this event. I am a huge proponent. I've been helping voters do their homework before they go to the polls. My name is Lynn Harris. I am currently an At-Large member of the Board of Education. But I came to this work, and I decided to run for this office in 2020 because I love the school system and I know it well. I have learned about this system as a former teacher in MCPS. As a parent, my son had his entire K-12 academic journey here in Montgomery County. He graduated from Einstein High School in 2021. And when he started in the school system, so did I. Went to that first PTA meeting, raised my hand to volunteer for something, and that is how I got started learning about the breadth and depth of this system. I served as a local PTA leader for years and in the countywide PTA as president and as vice president of advocacy. And through that work, I've truly got to know this system, built partnerships and relationships throughout the county, and believe deeply in what we can do to be better.
Perfect. Thank you. And Rita Montoya.
Good evening, and thank you so much for hosting this forum. It's really important to have spaces where Montgomery County voters can learn more about their candidates. My name is Rita Montoya. I'm a candidate for the At-Large seat on the Board of Education. I am your MCPS boots on the ground. I'm a mom of two elementary school students in third and fifth grade, and that's not going to change when I'm elected. I'm also a former PTA president, a current PTA volunteer. I live MCPS every single day. I'm also an attorney who values due diligence, so that means that I ask questions, I pay attention to detail, and I ask for more information when I need it. A vote for me means that we're going to focus on safe schools with reasonable safety measures, education about hate bias, and mental health support. It also means academic vigor, not rigor. We don't need to stress our students out. We need them to feel re-energized. We want them to love to learn and to instill that love of learning in them in these school spaces. It also means curbing financial waste through due diligence so that we can provide the environments that our children need to thrive because they are the leaders on the state, local, and national levels of tomorrow. We need to... Thank you.
Thank you. So thank you to all our candidates for those opening statements. Now, we are going to begin our debate, and Montgomery County Taxpayers League have two questions. Our first question will be in the order of Shebra Evans, Lynn Harris, Rita Montoya, and Brenda Diaz. So our first question is regarding the MCPS operating budget and the maintenance of effort. When the county council funds MCPS above maintenance of effort, they essentially reallocate funds from other government programs, for example, food security, public safety, and transportation. How would you, as a board member, ensure that strategy and improved academic proficiency are tied to all funding above MOB?
As a current sitting board member, what has been really important to me and for the system, I believe, is to ensure that we are monitoring the progress of our students so that through that monitoring, we can determine if the programs that we have instituted are actually benefiting and we are receiving a return on our investment. And if not, there is an evaluation program that has been established, which will allow us to, through data analysis, to be able to determine whether or not we should continue to do those programs. I think that that helps make certain that we're not wasting money, that we're ensuring that we're putting our money to what we know is working best for our students.
Great. Thank you. Next will be Lynn Harris.
Yes, such a great question. And first, I want to be clear. I'm not sure going above maintenance of effort is the conversation that I'm typically interested in having because really what I want to see is making sure that we are right sizing our budget for the school system we have now. And our state education funding is tied to per people, is tied to enrollment. But our needs have fluctuated. Our enrollment hasn't rebounded to pre-pandemic levels, but the needs of our students have dramatically evolved. We have far more students who need special education services, are emergent multilingual learners, and are newcomers. So to me, the question is, since we have a budget that is 90% humans, we need to make sure that the people in our system are in the positions they need to be in to serve the needs that we currently have and that we are continuously monitoring and evaluating the work on the ground in the classroom to make sure the way we have deployed our staff resources is meeting the needs of our students.
Thank you. And next would be Rita Montoya.
Thank you. You know, the idea of tying any funding or increases in funding to performance, I don't think is a solution that I would want to encourage because if we see spaces where our students are not performing or lacking or deficient in some way, that to me indicates a need for more help, not less. And so cutting money or reducing the amount we're giving or maintaining, especially when costs are going up, doesn't seem like quite the solution. I think the better strategic solution would be to, as some have mentioned, make sure that we're monitoring the progress of our programs, monitoring the progress of our students, not just in terms of proficiency results and performance measures, but actual progress. Are we seeing that growth? And also curbing our waste. We need to make sure that our money is going where it needs to go, where it's going to best provide the return of investment, the maximum value to our students and our communities. Again, we're growing our leaders of tomorrow. So when we can curb our waste and make sure that our money is going where we need it to, we might be able to then maximize those dollars and not be so concerned about whether there's poor performance or poor proficiency.
Great. Thank you. And next, Brenda Diaz.
Well, we definitely need to focus on making sure that whatever decisions that we make in terms of funding is tied, I believe, to student performance. And that means that we need to focus also on our teachers. So yesterday, at the listening session, we had various teachers come up, especially from special ed, saying that they don't have the resources that we need. So every single question has to tie into how does it actually promote academic achievement? How does it promote academic development? How does it promote academic excellence? So when our teachers don't have those resources, we need to prioritize that. That's one way that we can make sure that our funds, maintenance of effort, is being used effectively. And then also, we need to prioritize proven initiatives. If there's something in our budget that's not effective, we need to get rid of it. And we need to be brave enough and say, this is not working for our students, let's eliminate this program. This is not effective, let's eliminate this program. We need to focus on what is effective, what actually works in increasing academic proficiency in reading and writing and math. That's what we need to do.
Great. Thank you. And are there any rebuttals from our candidates at this time? I don't see any hands. Keep me honest. If not, we will move on to our second question. So for our second question, the order will be Lynn Harris, Rita Montoya, Brenda Diaz, and Shebra Evans. Charter schools. We continue to fund chronically failing public schools. Would you support funding charter schools in pockets of poverty? Lynn Harris?
You know, charter schools is an issue that's come before the board during my three and a half years of service. And I think I am always open to providing a robust, fun, enriching academic experience that fits a unique need that the school system can't currently fill. And in my mind, it comes down to, do we find the partners that we can trust and rely on? Do they have the plans in place to ensure their long-term viability and that they can meet state requirements? Because just because you're a charter school doesn't mean that you can escape the requirements to serve every student with whatever, you know, learning profile they bring to you, with whatever special needs they bring to you. You need to meet the same academic benchmarks as every other public school. And so from a board perspective, I am open to any enriching academic opportunity as long as I feel confident that it is well researched, well resourced, well thought out, and has a chance to succeed.
Thank you. Rita Montoya?
Thank you. I think we need to be careful about considering or viewing charter schools as some sort of panacea to the challenges that we have in our public school systems, whether it's in Montgomery County or elsewhere. I recognize I was just looking at proficiency results today, really concerned about these science scores. Our fifth grade black children have 18.9%. That's very concerning and alarming to me because I look to the future about how many scientists, engineers, doctors, you know, if we're not bringing black people into those positions, then that affects our entire community. So I too share those concerns, but I also share concerns about charter schools. Just at the beginning of this year, we saw right next door in DCPS, it was Eagle Academy that basically abruptly closed. And so then families were scrambling to figure out what they were going to do because there was no notice provided. DCPS then was scrambling. So I think that, you know, if we're going to even consider these, we need to understand what those consequences could be when things go awry.
Great. Thank you. Brenda Diaz?
I think the question of charter schools is really interesting. It goes to show that many people within our community no longer buy in the idea that MCPS can provide a quality education for our children. The fact that we're even considering charter schools. So in my mind, charter schools are definitely a benefit because that means that we're going to be able to increase trust in our community, that there's going to be increased buy-in from parents. And I believe that parents should have that choice. Family engagement is very important, and of course, I want family engagement and parental involvement in all of our schools. But when you're building a school and you have parents that are choosing that school, it's all in. So I definitely believe in charter schools. And just as there are examples of charter school failures, there are examples of charter school success. So we would look at those models such as KIPP Academy, for example, and the KIPP Schools and the Success Academy in New York City. These are models where they focus on not just academic rigor, you know, where they are making sure that students are getting grade-level appropriate assignments, but they're also focusing on character development, which is something that I really applaud charter schools for doing.
Thank you. And Shep, sorry, Shebra Evans?
Sure. I believe that parents are students' first teachers, and so I believe a parent should be able to do what they believe is helpful and important for their child. Being a board member who provides oversight to a charter school, I always want to make certain that I'm being fiscally responsible and, as it was stated, that there is a good plan in place because our kids only get one chance at every level. And we want to ensure that if we were to approve a charter school, that that charter school can be sustained with what they have in place. So those are just my thoughts on that.
Great. Thank you. So that wraps up our second questions. Are there any rebuttals from any of our candidates before we switch gears? Awesome. So thank you so much to everyone for participating in the Montgomery County Taxpayers League portion of our debate. I'm going to turn it over to our Germantown Gaithersburg Chamber of Commerce, Paula, to continue on.
Good evening, everybody. How are you? My name is Paula Ross. I'm the president and CEO at the Gaithersburg Germantown Chamber of Commerce. We serve the business districts in Gaithersburg, Germantown, Clarksville, and Damascus, all the way up to the county line. And our mission is to support our members and the business districts in building the economy and in advocacy to help businesses succeed in Montgomery County thereby growing the economy and increasing the quality of life for everybody. I have two questions for you here tonight, both centered on economic development as it relates to our school system. The first question will be answered in the order Rita Montoya, Brenda Diaz, Shebra Evans, and then Lynn Harris. The first question: For our economy to develop, employers in Montgomery County need to be able to attract and retain talented employees. To do that, we need a public school system that is attractive to those employees who would put roots here and grow a family here. However, the perception exists that our public school system is deteriorating, that MCPS is no longer the gold standard it once was held up to be. What do you think causes this shift in perception, and how will you address it?
Thank you so much. Rita Montoya? Because my family actually moved here for that very reason. We were the family in the question. We were actually given advice based on some things going on in our own family to find the best school system we could find and move there. And so we did. I still very wholeheartedly believe in the greatness of MCPS. That's why I'm here. That's why I'm invested. That's why my kids go to school here. But I do think that when, you know, families, and I hear this, you know, campaigning, when they see these low test scores, these low proficiency scores, when they have concerns about grade inflation, the safety incidents that come out that they see and that their students feel and relay, when they see some of the financial waste and then the call for more money, people feel very dissuaded about having their children come there. So I think that when we talk about addressing these issues, what we're talking about is rebuilding that trust with families, with potential families, with staff in MCPS, with our elected officials who work so hard to try to get us this funding and support these programs, and with our wider community, our taxpayers, right, our people who are homeowners. You spend wisely, invest in improvement approaches to close the gap, and have a healthy balance between mental health support and adequate law enforcement coverage so that everyone feels safe in the building, teachers and staff.
Thank you. Next, we have Brenda Diaz.
Right. So the Bethesda Magazine article went into great detail about why MCPS is actually deteriorating right before our eyes as we're seeing it. They mentioned lenient absentee policies, grade inflation, and then just curriculum that's not actually at grade level. So, you know, this is something that I definitely experienced when I was at Gaithersburg High School. I mean, you know, below-grade-level curricula, unfortunately, was something that was pretty much instituted across the board. Grade inflation was a problem as well. And then challenging students to succeed, to meet those challenges in the classroom was something that was frowned upon many times because they would get a... Maybe some students would get a below-level grade. How will I address this? Well, first of all, I want to give teachers the... like empower teachers. Yes, give the grade that they deserve. Let's start doing that, okay? We need to get rid of grade inflation, obviously. And then when it comes to absentee policies, you know, I was cut off. Right? Very short.
Thank you. Shebra Evans, please.
Sure. So I got into this work because I wanted us to just think about how we do things differently. When I see things that aren't quite going the way that I would like for them to, I get right in and help be a part of the solution. I think what would really be helpful for the school system and for the board is to get more out into the community, to have the conversation about what's happening in MCPS so that people are aware and they understand, they know our budget. This is a really great county. This is a really great state. We have some wonderful legislators that have put forth the blueprint that is going to allow us to ensure that our teachers are paid more. Teachers should be paid a decent wage because they are the ones that are helping us to produce the future CEOs of chambers of commerce, to be able to serve in leadership roles, to do all the jobs that we all depend and rely upon. And I think it really goes down to how we talk about what's happening in Montgomery County.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. And lastly, Ms. Harris.
Yeah, I think people perceive that there are problems in the school system for two reasons. One, because only the bad news gets reported by and large, but also because our school system is struggling with the same challenges that every other school system in the country is struggling with. And we are, very honestly, struggling to meet the needs of the current generation of learners, which is different from prior generations of learners. This is a school system that is still trying to catch up to the reality of how many of our students are newcomers, how many of our students are emergent multilingual learners, how many of our students need special education supports. And in our Special Populations Committee just today, one of the things we've focused on very directly is we need to transform the practice of teaching in MCPS to ensure that every teacher in every grade, in every content level, has the tools they need to powerfully instruct students with all levels of need and all types of learning challenges.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. I see two hands up for 30-second rebuttals. I will call on you in the order that I see you. Ms. Diaz first.
So Ms. Harris just mentioned that it's a perception. It's not a perception, it's a reality. The MCCPTA Curriculum Committee held a meeting earlier this year during the primary season where they had MCPS staff outright say that even at Wooton, which is a school with nearly 90% pass rate on the MCAP test, only, they ninth grade read only two books. So this is not a perception of deterioration. This is an actual reality. We need to bring back midterms. We need to bring final exams back. We need our students to be challenged in our school system, and they need to be getting grade-level appropriate work.
Thank you, Ms. Diaz. Ms. Montoya?
Thank you. I do want to recognize that some, a lot of the challenges that we have here in MCPS are challenges that we see in other districts in the state and other districts across the nation. Now, that being said, that doesn't mean that we should lower our standards for ourselves because those around us are not performing at standards. I don't hold that type of approach for myself. I hold myself to high standards because I know I can achieve. I hold my children to high standards because I know they can achieve, and they know those are the expectations, with support, of course. And I don't think that we should lower our standards and achievement goals for ourselves just because those around us are not performing the way that they should. It's really important that we set the example for our kids.
Thank you, Ms. Montoya. Ms. Evans or Ms. Harris, would you like a rebuttal? Ms. Evans?
Sure. I'm trying to raise my hand. So I will say this. What is important for us to be a good school system is pivot and, of course, correct. And so there is a committee studying the grades. I am totally in favor of bringing back final exams. I have daughters that are in college and it serves our students who want to go the college track to be able to have the practice and the experience, being able to study, right? And being able to take some of the exams that will help them in...
Thank you. I will move on to the next question. This question will be answered in the order Ms. Diaz, Ms. Evans, Ms. Harris, and Ms. Montoya. So economic development in Montgomery County also means readying our students for careers in Montgomery County. What is MCPS getting right in this regard, and where are there opportunities for significant improvement?
Right. So I think we're getting a bunch of things right. I think our immersion programs at the elementary school level are fantastic. My daughter's participated in them at Maryville Elementary School. Our gifted and talented programs at the elementary school level, our IB program, Poolsville magnet programs, the Edison programs. We even have like special programs at our bunch of different high schools, such as Gaithersburg. They have their Academy of Accounting and Finance. So I think we do a bunch of things really well to help our students prepare for life after MCPS. But there are some opportunities for improvement. We can expand these programs across the county. But there are some opportunities for improvement. We can expand these programs across the county. We can make more seats available for parents who want to enroll their children in them. We should be starting apprenticeship programs at local businesses and, and such. And then I moderately Moco actually is an example of that. They had an internship program where students were writing articles and conducting research. So these are the kinds of things that we should definitely do more of in MCPS. The, I, yeah.
Thank you. Our next response is from Ms. Montoya. No, that's not right. I'm sorry, Ms. Evans.
Okay, sure. So we want our students to have a competitive edge and to be competitive in whatever it is they want to do. And what I am really proud of is that we've made good on our promise and working towards allowing our students to be able, some of our students, close to about 1,000, have been able to graduate with their associate's degree and their high school diploma. That means that for the students that want to go on to get their bachelor's degree, it's that much less cheaper for them and more affordable. And then for our students that have their credentials, they're able to go into their career being able to kind of just jumpstart themselves. And so I'm proud of that work that we're doing. I'm proud that we are trying to ensure that our students are getting real life work experience. So there is a program where our students can have to internships and make a determination as to whether or not the career they thought they wanted to go into, that they actually really want to go in, or they might pivot into something a little bit different.
Thank you. Ms. Harris?
Yes, I think, you know, I have 180 students in my countywide internship this year. I'm a former MCPS teacher. I taught medical science at Thomas Edison High School. And I do shadow days where I, my, my students invite me to be their peer in their schools every day. And I spent all day with them in classes, learning alongside them, whatever the course, whatever they're doing, I'm doing it too. So I'm seeing from inside our schools what's happening in real time. And we are getting a lot right. We are creating a next generation of critical thinking problem solvers who are multilingual, who truly value others and what they bring to the table. We do, and I think a lot of our CTE programs that do provide students for free, a career level credential or licensure or more than one, as my program did, that really sets them moving forward quickly into a career path. The dual, the dual enrollment program, lots of graduates, but even more students taking those courses, a lot's going well.
Thank you. Ms. Montoya?
Thank you. I think one thing that we are getting right is that we are starting to measure progress, which I'm really excited to see. My youngest child's second grade, where he just left from second grade at Rosemary Hills. They did a lot of that last year. Maybe we're not quite where we'd like to be, but look at the growth and the progress. And I think that that is really kind of an optimistic, hope-based approach, which I love. And it also really captures what the students are actually doing. And I see more of that coming this year, which is fantastic. What we're getting wrong is special education. Every time I go to an event, I was walking in a parade and someone's talking to me from the sidelines. I get emails. I get, you know, over and over and over again. And in spite of the specific circumstances for that particular family or student, and even sometimes from teachers, the, the underlying theme is it should not be this hard to get the supports that we need for our children, to let them thrive. These kids can achieve, but they need the right supports. And it's oftentimes feels as if MCPS is gatekeeping those services, including even a proper assessment and evaluation.
Thank you for your responses. Please raise your hands if you would like a 30 second rebuttal to any of those responses. I'll call on you in the order that I see you. So Ms. Diaz first.
I just want to respond to something that Ms. Lynn Harris said about that she's going in the classroom and she's shadowing students. So I, I, I wonder when she's shadowing students, when she's shadowing specialized students, is she noticing that they're not getting the services that they need? Because Ms. Rita Montoya mentioned that, and that's something that I've also heard consistently as well, that our special ed students are struggling because they're, they're not being serviced as they should. So, you know, in these experiences in the classroom, what's actually, what's actually happening? What is she really saying?
Thank you. Ms. Evans, Ms. Montoya, Ms. Harris, would any of you like a 30 second rebuttal? Okay. Oh, Ms. Harris?
Yeah, I mean, I'll just answer the question. I'm in different classes. I just follow the students who are my spirit guides. But what I do see is special education students in the general education population who are getting, you know, one-on-one support in the classroom, one-on-one support in their, when they are learning on grade level curriculum alongside their peers. When I'm in truly special, are in special education classrooms with our most challenged learners, there I believe we need, we need to improve those services.
Thank you all. Any last rebuttals? Okay, that concludes the question, the two questions. Oh.
I have my hand up. Yeah.
Yes.
I was going to say we can always use more special education, more special education educators, and we could probably try to do an incentive to get more people to come into the field, to be able to work in MCPS, as well as make certain that we're training our students to at some point want to go into that position as well. We have seen an increase in the number of students and the, what we need is our federal officials to get more funding.
Thank you all very much. That concludes the two questions from the Gaithersburg Germantown Chamber of Commerce. I would encourage you all during the, the, the tail end of this campaign to really consider how the school system fits into the puzzle of economic development here in the county as we look to grow our economy, to provide more funding for programs, including the school system. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much, Paula, for that great segment. And I'm going to turn it over now to moderately Moco sponsor, Jason Maxstein.
Hi, Jason here from moderately Moco. I just want to say thank you again to everyone for being here, the candidates, the sponsors, and also the audience. It's great to have so many people who care about education, schools, and kids all in one place. My first question is, there have been significant security issues in MCPS in recent years, ranging from drug use to violence, trespassers, and pretty much everything in between. What do you see as the top security issues in MCPS currently and what is the best way to handle it? And we are starting out with Shebra Evans.
So some of the top security issues, well, we need to ensure that we are able to put more alarms on our doors. Some of our students may go outside doors, have some additional staff to be able to monitor the hallways. But I really think it's important to combat upon the school system to try to do more to be able to build relationships with our students, so we can really know who's in the school building. What some schools are doing a little bit different is having gatherings prior to school starting and in the very beginning of the school year to make our parents feel welcomed and our students to feel welcome, to know that they have a safe space and place and adults to be able to turn to. I think that will make a difference as well. What we have seen is that some of the issues in the, the, the community has been coming into the school buildings, but doing more on our end to ensure that there's safety and security for our students, such as badges to be.
Thank you. Lynn Harris?
Yes, you know, our schools are microcosms of the community that we, that we live in. And so what we're seeing in our students is mirroring what we're seeing outside of our schools. And I think one of the important things we need to be doing in schools is ensure, is building connections with our students and making sure they feel welcome and they feel valued and they feel seen. And if they, they have a trusted adult that they can go to, if they need any form of support, any time, that the protective value of one trusted adult is huge. But we also need to build stronger partnerships with our, our positive youth development and street outreach network partners at DHHS, because their bread and butter is being out in the community where so many of the issues that end up erupting in our schools are having their origins. And their expertise is in identifying sources of conflict, diffusing them, helping people heal from conflict, atone. And if we can deflect, if we can end conflict before it comes into our schools, that's the best thing.
Thank you. Oh, one sec, sorry, just lost my notes. Who's next? Rita, Rita Montoya. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much for this important question. From insecure doors to lack of security cameras, to hate bias, anti-blackness, anti-Muslim hate, antisemitism, to weapons, it's really hard to just pick one. I know parents and families who are already concerned about their children going to the middle and high schools because of the incidents that come out and the fears that they have, even including on the buses. So I think that we definitely need to focus here. I'm happy to hear that our new superintendent is making this a focus. We need to make sure that we are staffed properly, that we have enough adults in the building. And that includes making it easier for parents and community members to volunteer in our school buildings. We have people that want to help and we could use their eyes in the buildings. This also, I think, means facilitating and collaborating with our business partners. You know, folks maybe who have security companies where they can donate equipment and we can facilitate those things. It really takes an all hands on deck approach to solve this issue. And then, of course, sometimes we just need money. But there are grants available from the Maryland Center for School Safety at the state level, as well as schoolsafety.gov at the federal level and working with our elected.
All right, thank you. And then we have last Brenda Diaz.
Right, so, you know, earlier this year or in the past year, a Kennedy High School teacher testified to the board saying that it was essentially an open air drug market. People are coming from off campus to go onto campus to buy drugs. We had a report earlier this year, this actual school year, where an elementary school teacher was, you know, arrested for allegedly selling fentanyl during school hours. So this tells us that we have a serious cultural problem within MCPS, an overall cultural issue where students and even staff feel that selling drugs and participating in some sort of violence is a low risk activity during the day. These types of activities are not fair, obviously, to our teachers and students. Teachers want to focus on being professionals and helping our students achieve. And then our students want to focus on learning and doing their best in the class. So we need to look at how we can prioritize safety in our community and change the culture within MCPS. So there's accountability and transparency.
Thank you. So this next question, this is actually my favorite question to ask about any topic or any, you know, people is, what do you think is the biggest policy difference between you and your opponent that separates you from them? And we start with Lynn Harris. I forgot to give a chance for rebuttals if anyone would like to. Okay, I didn't see any answers. Okay, sorry, Lynn, you can start now.
Policy difference, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure. I think we all are interested in true accountability, whether it's on how we're spending our money, how we're tracking our dollars, how we're transparently sharing with the public where the money's going, how our students are actually doing and not just on standardized tests, but how they're doing as people in their schools every day. Are they well? And not just are they doing well? I think we all agree that we need to reform our grading and reporting policies. We need, we need to seriously look into a more comprehensive and enforceable cell phone policy. I think we need to look at policies around our, our, our start times to see if we, what we can do with our transportation constraints to create start times that are more aligned with, with the internal clocks of young people. And I think we need desperately to fix our, our special education system and make sure that we are treating people like people.
Thank you. Next is Rita Montoya.
Thank you. One space where I think that we, Ms. Harris and I may not quite be perfectly in alignment is our approach to school safety. My understanding, just based on the different forums and things that I've attended, is that Ms. Harris' focus seems to be purely on restorative justice and mental health and social emotional learning supports. I absolutely support those. I've worked for a nonprofit agency that supported those services, that did research there. I've been a juvenile public defender. I know firsthand, we absolutely need these. Our kids do need support, especially post-COVID. I also come from a community where we have not had good experiences with law enforcement. And I also know that the police are not going anywhere. We are not defunding the police. They actually provide a vital service to our community in certain instances. And so if we want to make sure that we decrease that tension, that we, that our, our children understand and see them as a resource, and that our law enforcement sees our communities and our children for who they are and not for stereotypes and prejudices, then we need to, you know, disconnect is not going to do that. So I do think that law.
Brenda Diaz?
Well, I think one of the largest policy differences is made apparent this evening in the fact that she did not appear tonight. What does it say when someone who's running for Board of Education does not want to meet with every single community that's invested in wanting to improve academic outcomes for our children? I find that astonishing. So yes, I've met with anyone and everyone who wants to improve safety in our schools, who want or want to increase academic rigor. I, that's something that I definitely focus on. I, I want to bring back, well, school safety is a priority of mine. My opponent believes that schools are oppressive. She believes in, you know, restorative justice practices and social emotional learning. While those are fine, well and good, I also believe that police do play a role and they can serve as role models in our schools, which is what they've done in the past. So those are our major policy differences.
Thank you. Shebra Evans?
Yes, so putting forth policy at the local and state level, having the ability to be able to go out into the community and take the feedback and the recommendations to make some adjustments, make amendments and make revisions. We do, or I should say, I do value the input that I receive from our community members. I am here to ensure that I am serving you. And so that means that I represent all, I listen to all, and I take your feedback into consideration. And sometimes that feedback is turned into a policy. So I think that you can't do this job without working together. That's why I'm here today, to be able to listen and to be able to respond to the questions and continue to see how, when we're not in agreement, how we can disagree better and then find where we have shared values and work in that direction.
Okay, great. Thank you. Do we, okay, we've got one. Raise hand. Go with Lynn?
Yeah, I, no, I, I, I did just want to clarify. While I strongly am a proponent of prevention strategies to, so that incident, serious incidents don't arise in our schools, I do support infrastructure investments to make our, our buildings as secure as we can with, you know, secure vestibules and the technology we need so that we understand who is in our buildings and making sure that only people that should be in our buildings are, are in them with ID technology, with, with door alarms, with.
Great, thank you. Looks like that is it for my portion. You know, just again, wanted to thank everyone for being here. And, you know, we'll have this on YouTube for further recording or further viewing for anyone that wasn't able to make it here tonight. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Jason and moderately Moco. And so I will turn it over now to Clean Slate Moco. Over to you.
Thanks, Esther. Good evening, everyone. My name is Caleb Micho. I was asked to represent Clean Slate Moco. If you're not familiar, Clean Slate Moco is a community journalism publishing site that seeks to provide a place for all voices, but especially those that might not align to the status quo or that wish to remain anonymous in order for them to still be heard on issues relevant to Montgomery County. I know the site has published articles critical of many of you, and so I personally admire your willingness to still show up today and speak with voters. Thank you for that. The first question I have is around the MCPS operating budget. The order of answering will go Ms. Montoya, Ms. Diaz, Ms. Evans, and Ms. Harris. The first question is this. For the last several years, families across the county have been struggling with higher prices. Family budgets are squeezed tight, requiring many to eliminate indulgences and cut back on necessities. Likewise, during this period, there have been yearly cries to. Likewise, during this period, there have been yearly cries to fully fund the school system, a budget that has only increased each year. What is your definition of a fully funded M C P S budget? And is it something we ever achieve, or is it simply a political rallying cry? I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Montoya.
Thank you. Um, I think yes and no to all of those things. I, I, you know, we, we get caught up in this, is it either or? Um, I think that we definitely need to curb waste. We need to look at where the money is going. And like you said, just like a family, we would cut some things, right? And as parents, we usually cut from where? From the top. Right? We don't cut from the kids, at least not in my family. So, you know, that's the approach that I would like us to see taking, uh, to see us taking here. I think we probably also likely need more money. As much as 3.3 billion sounds like this is a gigantic school system in terms of the volume of students, staff, schools, and quite frankly, need, you know, especially post-COVID. It's COVID was not the cause, but it definitely intensified things. Um, again, you know, everywhere I go, special education, our students are not being served. We need to figure out why that is to see if there's waste there, but it probably also means we need some extra funding, at least for staff and parent educators and things like that. Um, probably some more supports for our family, uh, parents and caregivers. Um, we seem to be chronically understaffed. We need to determine why that is. We do live in a, a high cost of living.
Thank you. Next up is Ms. Diaz.
Right. So fully funded budget. So definitely we need to go line item by line item on the budget and we need to make that transparent. When the Montgomery County Taxpayers League had their Budget Palooza, it was made very clear that there were several categories that were labeled other, and we had no idea what they were, and they were in the millions of dollars. So when M C E A, the teachers' union, talks about fully bunch, uh, fully funding M C P S, what they're really saying is they want to fully fund waste. And we need to eliminate waste. We need to be very transparent about where our money is going and we need to be purposeful. Every single dollar needs to be dedicated to our children. So I would advocate definitely for the Office of Inspector, of the Inspector General to continue with having their audit. I think, um, there's an, there's an office open right now doing just that. I think that's fantastic. The reality is that a bunch of our money is going to salaries, pensions and benefits. And so with whatever is left, all of it should be dedicated to our kids.
Thank you, Ms. Diaz. I'll turn it over now to Ms. Harris.
Yeah, I, I don't, the, the, the fully, I'm not sure what it means actually, when we talk about fully funding. I believe we need to right-size our budget and we need to make sure that we are spending money that we need to spend in the areas that we need to spend it and not just continuing to spend in areas which we've, in which we've traditionally spent or when we perceive because of blueprint requirements or something like that, we need to, to expand our spending. One example is our pre-K expansion. We need to make sure that expansion is, is done in a way where, where supply and demand meet, not when we are creating excess numbers of seats. Um, when we are in these fiscal times, because that money could be spent elsewhere. And I think it is, it's key when you have a budget that is, um, 90% people that, again, you make sure that everybody is in, is doing the job they're supposed to do and they're doing, and the, the work is happening where it needs to. But we also have several areas of work that need to be improved. Special education is one. And that is not spending more, it's doing better.
And my apologies, Ms. Evans, I complete, I'm still learning my ABCs, I guess. I completely skipped over, um, you, you are next. My apologies.
No problem. I knew I would get my turn. Um, great question. You know what? I've been attending the County Executive's Communication Forums around the budget. He has scheduled 11. There are eight more left. And one thing that he has said very vocally is that since 2010, that the school system has, um, not been fully funded. The funding that we've received has not been adjusted for inflation, but enrollment has continued to increase. And so he also said that he's not even certain how we're able to do what we do because we don't get the adequate funding. So what I'm gonna say is, I'm not in, I've, I've never, as a board member, I've never asked for taxes to be increased. And what I did hear from a recent candidate that I really liked, it was, um, candidate Angela Alsbergs for U S Senate, what she said was, I wouldn't want to increase tax price, I mean taxes, raise taxes. I would want to work to try to get increased funding for Title I and Professor Education. I'm in favor of our federal officials helping us to get increased funding.
Thank you for that. I'll now open it up for any rebuttals. Ms. Montoya.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a point about the blueprint and expanding pre-K because I firmly believe this. I was a Head Start graduate, um, that allowed me to then have the tools that I needed to not only graduate from high school, but community college, a four-year school, and then law school. And I just heard our new superintendent just the other day say the best return on investment for K through 12 education is pre-K. And I absolutely believe that. So when we talk about, you know, we should be, you know, not putting the money there, but shifting it to something else. Um, actually, pre-K is exactly where we should be sending it. And I personally was shocked as a parent to move.
Thank you. Ms. Harris.
Yes, I would never suggest that we do not fully fund pre-K. Uh, my point is simply, um, we need to match that, our, the money we're spending on expansion with the demand for that expansion. Uh, again, right sizing our investment.
Ms. Evans or Ms. Diaz, anything additional? Okay, I'll move on to the next question, which is around anonymous reporting. We do not have to look hard at M C P S's recent history to see that there has been a general disregard for anonymous feedback, complaints and reports. This can be seen from the Beadleman scandal to ninth graders hesitant to report drug use in school bathrooms. What role do you feel anonymity should play in creating a vibrant school system for administrators, administrators, teachers, students and parents? And what would you do to ensure even anonymous voices are taken seriously? I'll start the answers with Ms. Diaz.
I'd like to take it a step back, which is to say that any sort of reporting is sort of, is frowned upon, it seems like, within M C P S. You hear parents complain, you hear teachers complain, you hear students complain, and very often it feels like things get stuck. Um, uh, you know, complaints about the curriculum and not having the kind of, uh, access or the kind of resources that you need, you know, special education teachers are talking about, they don't actually have physical books, but they have to go online. Um, so, well, if, if that's being disregarded and that's something that's being made public in various forums, um, imagine anonymous reporting. So obviously, we need to make space for anonymous reporting. That's something that's part of culture. It's a, it's a cultural problem. It's a leadership problem. Um, and it becomes a safety issue if we're not listening to these anonymous reports. Um, you know, just going back to the elementary school teacher example, you know, what's going on with the principal? Is that person facing consequences? You know, they had no idea what was going on in their school.
Thank you. We'll turn now to Ms. Evans.
Sure. So corrective action has been taken to ensure that if anonymous complaints, complaints come through, that they are not only followed all the way through to the end, but at different, um, times during the, the the investigation process, that the anonymous, um, complainer has updates at a regular intervals. And if there's something else that they're stating within that complaint, that is investigated as well. So what I do is I pride myself on being very open and being, um, very, um, approachable. So people know that they can talk and come to me. If, in fact, it makes people feel more comfortable, because for some people, they do want to remain anonymous, then I want people to feel comfortable being able to report how they want to. But what people can be rest assured of is that there have been procedures and processes that have been put in place so that, um, if you see something, that you're able to say something if you want to remain anonymous. I do leave emails for anonymous and their stuff is handled in that way.
Thank you. Ms. Harris.
Yes, we definitely learned, uh, that M C P S Department of Compliance and Investigation had a long, multi-year history of not investigating or inadequately investigating or radically investigating anonymous complaints and pretty much ignoring collateral complaints. And, um, that is one area of work that I, anybody that's watched any of the board meetings where we were talking about this knows, we said very, very clearly, the Department of Compliance and Investigation has got to be wholly reformed soup to nuts to bring it into compliance in parity with industry standards for that work. And the people doing that work need to have the professional credentials to do it well. We have instituted, uh, wholesale, um, practices in M C P S with wide dispersion of all of the methods that are available for individuals to report anonymously or otherwise. And I, I, I can't speak for every single instance and whether every single person feels that they are safe reporting anything anonymously, but I do know that we have seen an enormous uptick in reports.
Thank you. And Ms. Montoya.
Thank you. I mean, I, you know, look, ideally, we would have a culture established where people don't feel like they have to hide to make these complaints, raise these concerns, but that's not what we have here. So my concern is less with the anonymity or the approach to the complaint. For example, the Montgomery County Office of Investigator, Investigator General takes anonymous complaints. Not an issue for me. My issue is, are we conducting due diligence? When we receive these complaints, whether it's a school system, a county agency, a community organization or nonprofit, what are we doing to look into them before we put them into the public space? How do we address them? Right? Are we doing our due diligence? Are we asking the right questions? Are we looking into detail? Or, or are we just shooting out things? Because, you know, we also need to consider, and people should consider, that some of these things could rise to the level of libel and slander. And that's not a space where I think anyone wants to go. I genuinely think we all want our school system to be better. And so if we can learn to engage better as well, I think that would start to establish a culture where people feel free to discuss these issues because they know that people are going to take due diligence and care and come up with.
Terrific. Thank you. We'll enter rebuttal now. And, uh, Ms. Diaz, I know you've had your hand up for a while, so we'll start with you.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment. Um, it's, it's great that we have these, you know, that there's an uptick. And I say that's great because that means that our, that people are actually going to these anonymous lines. But we need to make these procedures and processes public. Like, we need to know what these steps are in order to take that due diligence seriously. How do I know? How can I trust that M C P S is actually going to take my report seriously if it's not established what these procedures are going to be? So as I'm taking like a leadership role within the Board of Education, there needs to be that sort of accountability made public to everyone.
Thank you. Would any other candidates like to expand or offer a rebuttal?
I would. I just wanted to, um, say now to Ms. Diaz, but to everybody on the Zoom, that there is a webpage, um, devoted totally to being able to, um, determine how to go about putting through, um, an anonymous tip or just any kind of complaint, as well as a page that, um, tracks the, the, um, complaint that's coming through. And I will try to do my due diligence and put the link in the chat if I can do that.
Well, that concludes the questions from Clean Slate Moco. Once again, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Brenda, you had your hand up. You.
Yeah. No, I just wanted to say, I mean, it's fantastic to have these websites up. That's all well and good. But the problem is that the culture is the leadership within the board, that something like Beadleman could even take place, you know? So it, it's, it's, you can have the website, but if people don't trust what's actually, that things are going to be covered, then that's serious. And that's where the change needs to take place.
That concludes the questions from Clean Slate Moco. Thank you once again to all of the candidates for showing up and participating, making your voice heard to voters across the county. I'll turn it over now. It's back to Esther.
Thank you so much, Clean Slate. And, um, thank you to all the candidates and great questions. I will turn it over now to our 480 Club sponsor, Brian McNeary.
Hello, everybody. Um, my name is Brian McNeary, and I've been asked to represent the 480 Club tonight. Um, the 480 Club has been working in the community, partnering, um, providing mentor, mentorship services to middle school students, recreational services, as well as working in the high schools throughout the county, um, providing positive youth development. Um, I just want to thank, um, the candidates today for showing up, and I want to thank everyone in the community for attending the Zoom. And I want to thank all the sponsors for, um, showing up as well. So we have a couple of questions today, and our first question is in regards to the out of school time. Um, so last year, M C P S was fortunate to have grant funding to offer out of school time programming on non-instructional days, um, after-school days and on Saturdays. Um, programs such as the 4D Club are unique in the way that they serve middle school students through mentoring, homework support and positive youth development. These programs ensure that middle school students have something, um, to do that is productive on out of school time. Um, and the collaboration is done through the Montgomery County Recreation Facilities and the Collaboration Council. Um, this programming has allowed approximately 7,000 students to attend events and activities on days off at no cost and approximately 2,500 students to participate in after-school activities at no cost. While the grant funding has ended, um, out of school time programming will still continue through partnerships. Um, it will take some time to build a robust program similar to last school year, but with the out of school time office still in place, it can happen. So my question is, if elected, um, what do you, what is your plan to ensure that the out of school time office is embedded within the M C P S budget? And how do you plan to secure additional funding so that this can grow? Um, and first, we will have Shebra Evans and then Lynn Harris, um, and then Ms. Montoya and then Ms. Diaz. So Shebra, you can answer first.
Sure. So the 480 Club is a great community partner, and I've had, um, Mr. Hooks, and I've seen you, Ms. Halyer. You've actually received one of the, um, boards awards for the work that you all do, um, in the community with our youth. So a very, um, big champion of out of school time, um, was the reason why it came forward, being able to serve on the board. My colleagues and I thought this was very important and very necessary. We've seen, um, the benefits to our students, like you, like you mentioned, um, on the half-days and when school is out, having somewhere for our students to go. They've been introduced and have access to a lot of different, um, mentors and leaders in the community, and we do see the benefit. So I would continue to support, um, out of school time. And, um, thank you for the work that you all do in the community because it is very helpful and I've been able to see you in action. And, um, we're able to do a whole lot and it benefits our students in the classroom by having access.
Okay. Thank you for sharing, um, Ms. Harris.
Yes, first, thank you, Mr. McNeary, for the work that you do and with the youth in Montgomery County. It, it really is invaluable and it's life-saving work. Um, I think to ensure that we can expand M C P S's support for out of school time activities, which I agree is mission critical. Um, you know, we have Jennifer Strobel, one person in the Office of Curriculum, who's doing an amazing job and doing great work, reaching out to partners like 480, like the Parks and Rec, other, other organizations like that, but she's just one person. And ensuring that, A, the funding for that position remains and looking at other ways, we're, one of the things that we're working on right now inside the system is to, um, come up, i- is to do a much better job of, of tracking and applying and monitoring our, our grant opportunities. And so if we can professionalize that work more, it might, it should enable us to perhaps identify more grants that can fund this work. But we also have an amazing cadre of students who are interning in that office that we might be able to deploy to support that work as well.
Okay, thank you. Um, Ms. Montoya.
Thank you so much for this question. Um, I have a current fifth grader now, and I'm already trying to figure out and quite frankly, worry about what he's going to do next year after school, uh, for sixth grade. Because our middle schoolers are definitely more independent. They can, you know, handle responsibility, but they're not quite old enough, um, in my opinion, to just be let out on the loose. And so as a parent, I have to figure out where they're going to go. And so out of school time options are absolutely crucial. Um, I remember seeing them from last year. And I think that, you know, trying to work more heavily perhaps with our Department of Recreation so that perhaps they can take on some of those logistical services as P T A president last year at an elementary school. Um, I actually worked with Department of Recreation to set up affordable after-school options for our kids. We were using third-party vendors and it was a really costly program. I happened to stumble upon Department of Rec that said, hey, we can take care of that for you. Same vendors, but we're cutting out the, you know, the middleman of having to try to read all these contracts and things like that because the department's already doing it. And our tax dollars are paying for it. So it was great. The parents loved it. It was much more affordable and the kids had a blast and we're using it again this year.
Thank you very. Thank you very much. And then Ms. Diaz.
So programs like the four eighty club and out of school time, and these are all great programs and we need to expand upon them. I, I remember when I was in elementary school and in middle school, these were the kind of programs that I participated in after school. I'd loved after school programs. And when my children were in middle school and high school, those are the kinds of things that I enrolled them in. You know, Gatesburg Middle School has a program right across the street from the school that was excellent. They went on field trips and such. So these are the kind of things that we need to be investing in. I would encourage, you know, all of Montgomery County. If to donate to these type of organizations so that they have the money they need to serve our children. You know, we can always give, you know, privately, you know, or just pro bono, you know, our services. To organizations like the four eighty club. When I was growing up, the organi, the organization that helped me after school. You know, in like tutoring, that's where they got a bulk of their funding. So private citizens and charities and organizations, I would encourage civic life to be renewed and in that way.
Hey, awesome. Do we have anyone that would like to provide any rebuttal to anything that has been said for this question? Okay, great. Thank you so much, all the candidates for responding. There's question number two. Brian, over to Brian. Okay, maybe I'll take this one. So our second question is related to mental.
I think Brian was trying to talk, but he's muted.
Oh, Brian, please unmute.
Yes, sorry. Okay, here I am. So question number two is in regards to mental health. So in Montgomery County, nearly forty five percent of high school students reported feeling sad or hopeless in twenty twenty two. According to the Maryland Youth Risk Behavior Survey. Additionally, opioid related overdoses in Montgomery County have surged by over fifty percent in recent years. According to Maryland Department of Health, Montgomery County Public Schools. It's highly diverse with minorities comprising over seventy three percent of the student body. Thirty two percent is Hispanic or Latino, twenty eight percent black or African American and fourteen Asian. And our budget for this year being three million, three hundred twenty two thousand. But the psychologist to student ratio is eight per ten thousand students. And the social worker to student ratio is five per ten thousand students with only eighty one social workers in the schools. And only one hundred thirty seven psychologists in the schools. So given the ongoing mental health and substance abuse crisis affecting both the nation and Montgomery County. What are your thoughts on the current staffing levels within the schools? And the answering for this will be first Ms. Harris, then Ms. Montoya, Ms. Diaz and Ms. Evans. So Ms. Harris.
Yes, thank you. I mean, I think one of the things that we have to acknowledge is that we are spending far more on mental wellness now than we were pre pandemic. And making sure, and, and so I don't think that we as a school system can provide all of the mental wealth services that our students and staff may need. That's why we need to continue to build strong partnerships. And, and currently we are working with Every Mind, with Identity, with Y M C Youth and Family Services, with Jessa. And they are, they are coming into our schools and delivering services directly to students during the school day. And, you know, but one of the things that we are able to do, both with our own staff and the support of our community partners. Is provide care management, mental health support services, P Y D, Positive Youth Development Services. And youth development services in every one of our secondary schools, three to five days a week. And so that's a huge improvement over what we were doing pre pandemic. Not enough, but much better.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Montoya, you're next.
Thank you so much. Yeah. I mean, I think it goes without saying that the ratios that we have for school psychologists, school counselors. And our, you know, folks who can do evaluations and provide those services is, you know, we, we need to get those up. They're ridiculous. I'm looking at the chart that you provided, which I appreciate. And those ratios are not acceptable. We also though, need to recognize that if we want to make sure that those mental health professionals and social emotional learning professionals, emotional health professionals. Reflect the student demographic, reflect our black students, our Latino students, our Asian students. That we are creating pipelines for that. Are we educating our students in those demographics so that they can secure those degrees and certifications and licenses? To then come back to our schools and provide those services for our students? I, I don't think we are right now. We need to make sure that our college programming is accessible so that students can get tuition assistance. Internship placements so that they can secure their hours to be licensed social workers so that again, they can come back into our schools and provide this.
Thank you, Ms. Montoya for your response. Ms. Diaz.
The mental health crisis that we're experiencing in M C P S and across the county and across the country. I think a lot of it can be resolved in many ways by developing agency in our children. So what is agency? Agency is learning to see ourselves not as victims of our personal circumstances. But as architects of our own better futures and to do so even in the face of real obstacles. I'm getting this from this book entitled Agency by Ian Rowe. And this book focuses on how we can do that for our children. We need to get rid of our phones in the classroom. We need to dedicate time to reading poems such as Invictus. That focuses on the power of our individual selves to be able to tackle the challenges in our lives. Our children need to know that when they're facing challenges, that we as parents, as teachers, as role models, as mentors. That we will be there for them through every stage. It matters not how straight the game, how charged with punishments this world. I am the master of my fate. I am the captain of my soul. That is what we need to teach our children.
Thank you. Thank you for your response, Ms. Diaz. Ms. Evans.
Sure. Um, every year since I've been on the board, I've tried to ensure that there is an increase in school psychologists, school social workers in every budget as well as counselors. Last year, when I attended the National School Board Association, Montgomery County Public Schools won the Magna Award, which is the highest award you can win at the national level. For the work that our school psychologists and social workers did around providing mental supports to our students. Is it enough? Absolutely not. We still do need more and being on the board is more than just adopting budgets and approving curriculums. We're also working with colleges and universities, having those conversations about what we're not seeing enough of. And how they can help us in trying to recruit or have programs that don't create a lot of barriers for our students. And it also means working with our state legislators to meet. Not clear your it is the pain.
Ms. Evans, Esther, could you help me out if there's any rebuttals?
Okay, I don't see any hands raised, physical or virtual. Anyone wants to unmute candidates to provide a rebuttal? Okay. Thank you so much, Brian with four eighty club for your segment on the Board of Education Candidate Debate Funding Our Future. And now I will turn it over to our last co sponsor, the Parents Coalition of Montgomery County. Janice, over to you.
Thank you, Esther, and thank you to our sponsors, our candidates and attendees for being here tonight. My name is Janice Sartucci. I'm with the Parents Coalition of Montgomery County, Maryland. Formed in two thousand and two, the Parents Coalition has sought to achieve the goals of content. I'm sorry, coherent, content-rich curriculum standards, high expectations combined with timely remediation and acceleration. A wider range of educational options for parents and children, greater transparency and accountability and meaningful community input. And so on the transparency and accountability point this evening. Our first question, the appellate court of Maryland has ordered Montgomery County Board of Education to review the one hundred and sixty eight million dollar H E T M C P S L L C Electric School Bus Contract. In light of the fact that two of the M C P S Department of Transportation Directors were integrally involved in the electric school bus bidding process and awarded the contract to an affiliate of the company they were receiving kickbacks from. M C P S's Todd Watkins and Charles Ewald awarded the electric school bus contract to Highland. Highland proposed an American Truck and Bus as a subcontractor. Watkins and Ewald were engaged in an embezzlement scheme with American Truck and Bus. After the contract was awarded to Highland, M C P S allowed Highland to create a new company called H E T M C P S. And M C P S wrote the contract to H E T M C P S L L C, even though that company never bid on the proposal. American Truck and Bus remained as a subcontractor on the contract. The Montgomery County Board of Education has refused to review the H E T M C P S L L C contract. Despite a mandate, a court order from the appellate court of Maryland. And our question on that issue is, kind of example, does this set for public school students? And the first response will come from Rita Montoya.
Good evening and thank you so much for this question. There's been a lot of mismanagement of this contract. So I'm grateful that you're asking about it so the public can understand it as well because I don't think most people realize. I'm a lawyer. If a court tells you to review something, then you need to review it. I mean, it's really that simple. We don't get to disobey court orders. So I think that there was a lot of review that needed to be done with this contract in its entirety. We needed to follow procurement policies. We needed to again vet the contractors and vendors. We need to look into things. We need to conduct due diligence. We shouldn't just be signing things and passing things along because it fits certain goals. I absolutely have climate goals. I think having electric buses ultimately is a great idea. But not if we're doing it with haste and approving contracts without reading them that don't contain things like penalty provisions. That don't set out safety provisions, which I know is your next question. But you know, on, on the whole, I can see that here there was a lack of due diligence. Perhaps in our quest to attain these climate goals before others. But not what they thank you.
Thank you. Brenda Diaz. Brenda?
Yes, sorry about that. Um, okay, so I mean, the kind of example that this sets for our children obviously is a form one. I mean, I'm thinking about the times and that I've been in the classroom and you write the instructions right there on the board. And people are still asking, what am I supposed to do? So, you know, it, it's right there and it was listed for us in the contract, what M C P S, what the board needed to do, the steps were there. And so the fact that we did not do our due diligence, you know, it, it's a poor example for following instructions that have been listed out, right? I mean, obviously this is a waste of money and, you know, for, and for a cause that, you know, put our children last and not first. I mean, speaking with a bus driver at the Mount Calvary Baptist Church Community Party recently. And she was saying that these buses in particular, they, it's the whole thing is a mess. You know, they take a long time to charge in between in the mornings and the afternoons. So not only is there a problem on the contract issue, there's a problem with just the practical issue of getting these buses on the roads for our children.
Thank you. So awesome. My, oh, but next is Shebra Evans.
Sure. So I pride myself, particularly as the former board president. Our contracts are often complicated and I made certain that because my name was on those contracts that I did read them. And so in this particular instance, the, the company had a bit of a reorganization. And so we were able to still do business with them. So it was not anything shady or not straightforward or upfront. We have other contracts where the, when they're awarded, that they do create additional sister companies. That's not unusual for a company. And so I'm able to talk with anybody if they want to go in more depth. But as a board member, I pride myself on asking questions, making certain that we are holding the system accountable. And that we're not rubber stamping and that we are, we are very much aware of what's happening. And so rest assured that we try to do our due diligence.
And Lynn Harris, thank you, Shebra and Lynn Harris.
Yeah, first I do want to correct one thing. The board hasn't refused to review the, the contract as ordered by the Circuit Court in March. It was remanded to the state who remanded it to us. We requested and, and we asked the I G to do that review for us. The inspector general agreed and we expect the results of that within the next week. And but as far as the, the contracting processes go, the first thing I would just say for context, CPS has the largest electric bus fleet in the country. And yes, we were way out in front. Yes, we, we were ambitious. Maybe we were overly ambitious. But I think we did try something that is the emerging technology and, you know, fleets will be electric and we are in front of the curve in some ways. As far as our contracting processes and our procurement processes go, I, I agree that those processes need to be reformed. We have already partnered with the Council for Great City Schools who came in and did a soup to nuts review of our contracting and procurement processes. And we're implementing their, their suggestions.
And any rebuttal on that discussion? Anyone?
No, we'll go to the second question. The Montgomery County Board of Education paid one hundred and sixty eight thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars for a comprehensive review of the M C P S Department of Transportation. But when the review was completed, the report by the Center for Effective School Operations, over eighty pages. Was shelved and never presented publicly to the Board of Education or made public. I made it public. The C E F's report reveals that M C P S fleet maintenance workers are in imminent danger of being crushed or electrocuted because the repair bays are not designed for the heavier electric school buses. Electric school bus repairs risk danger of electrocution or lift collapse if bays are not set up properly. That's one example of what's in this report. Would you support an independent dedicated Office of Inspector General to focus exclusively on Montgomery County Public Schools so that when reports are hidden? When staff are in danger of death or injury, there would be someone to speak up and alert the public to fraud, waste and abuse of public funds and to dangers to staff and students. Thank you. And we will start with Brenda Diaz.
I appreciate you making this report public. I mean, these are the kind of things that, you know, community engagement makes known for everyone. And so this, and we definitely need to continue that, like our community needs to hold M C P S a task, needs to hold the Board of Education to task. So I definitely commend the Parents Coalition for, for doing that. We, you know, obviously I support an Office of Inspector General to focus on M C P S and what's going on within M C P S. We need to make our, all of these things public. There needs to be an audit. Obviously, we need to keep our staff safe. There should not be waste and fraud and such things. So there needs to be a thorough review of our budget and that's what's something that we need to dedicate all of our time towards to make sure that every single dollar benefits our students' education.
Thank you. Shebra Evans.
Sure. I absolutely support having someone in the board office. You all know that we are part time. We have less than a dozen staff members. And so any way that we can continue to ensure or let our community know that we're trying to be transparent, I'm very open for that. So we can find the money. We definitely, let's get an O I G.
Thank you. Lynn Harris.
Yes, I mean, first I would suggest that that was a good use of funds because I've read that report and it's very comprehensive. I don't know why it didn't, the full report didn't come to the board until the end of August. I can only suggest that there was a lot going on in the system, including many turnovers in leadership last spring. And people were focused on getting through the budget, I presume. But I, I, one of my concerns that I've raised with Dr. Taylor is I, I think we need to do a better job as a system of, in our occupational safety and health work. I'm a public health professional. We are under, we are understaffed for our occupational safety needs, given the size of our system. And this is one tool that I hope will help us address some of our challenges in keeping our workspaces, making our workspaces safe and keeping our workers safe. The, the task force to implement the recommendations from the report started work about three weeks ago and we will be getting reports regularly.
Thank you. And Rita Montoya.
Thank you. I, I do support the idea of a focused or dedicated MCPS OIG. Now, I would like to find out from the current Montgomery County OIG office whether they feel like they can absorb already, or do they need additional staff? Just some of those logistics, right? We don't want to spend money, more money than we need to if they're able to do that. But I do think having someone focused on that would be a great idea. I don't know, though, that that would have, would have been what brought the CISO report to light, right? The issue here was that MCPS had the report and they didn't release it. So if no one knows, they can't then complain about something that they don't even know exists. There was tons of information in the CISO report that I think the public really needs to see and should be shocked about hearing. And so I'm grateful that we were able to find it, but we only found that because you went and looked for it and then gave it to the media so that they could publish it and we could all see it, right? So again, I don't know that OIG gets at that. I think what we have is a transparency issue continuing by MCPS. Any reports that are ordered and paid for with all of our tax dollars with the county and state and federal monies should be on the website.
And now we go to rebuttal on that question. Anyone? Any rebutts? Nothing, seeing none. Thank you so much. Back to Esther.
Thank you so much, Janice and the Parents Coalition of Montgomery County, and thank you to all the sponsors and candidates for your support today. Thank you for all the attendees that are here. We are now going to open it up to our community of attendees. If you have questions, please raise your virtual hand and we will see if we can get to as many as we can. Our tentative end time is 9:00 PM. So again, please be respectful in your question. Please be concise with your question and we will give each candidate 30 seconds to provide a response.
Esther, real quick, I actually tracked all the questions that people have been typing in the chat and I sent the document to all the co-hosts. I don't know if we want to pick them from that and that way they're in chronological order in terms of who asked what when.
Would I kick us off? I'll find the document on my side.
Yeah, um, let's see. And also there's several people asked multiple questions. So you know, I was, so Harold asked, first question I would like all candidates would be, do you agree our education system is in a crisis and what would you do to start addressing this reality?
How would you like us to answer, Jason? Do you want us to just?
Sorry. Um, yeah, I didn't think about that. Yeah, we just, who did we leave off with? Or I mean, I'm okay to do whichever.
The last candidate was Rita Montoya, was Rita Montoya that spoke.
Okay, so.
Brenda Diaz?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that question. I, I would say that we are in crisis. The Bethesda Magazine article made it very clear that MCPS is on a downward slide and that's something that definitely needs to be addressed. You know, we need to reinstate academic rigor in our program, not vigor, not shake things up, not necessarily make things interesting. We need to install grade appropriate assignments. The MCCPTA Curriculum Committee and MCPS made it very clear that that's not happening. So that's what we need to do.
Okay, next, Shebra Evans. Would you like to provide a response?
Sure. With progress monitoring happening at every board meeting and for you all, that's twice a month for the transitional grades, the board is able to see where we need to make adjustments. And so those adjustments have been made. We have math coaches that are helping ensure that our teachers are getting the, the coaching to be able to go in to meet the needs of our students who at our varying levels, in addition to Montgomery County was the first to move to the science of reading before the state required it. That's some of the ways that we're trying to make certain that.
Great. Next, Lynn Harris.
I think, as I said a little bit earlier, the, the, one of the key things we need to do is transform our, our, our instructional practices to meet the 21st century realities that we're facing now. And that means ensuring that evidence-based best practices are the norm of instruction at every grade level and every content that our teachers are given the professional development they need to develop that expertise that we are continuously in the classroom with those teachers, monitoring instruction, looking at the outcome with students. And I, I think learning does need to be fun. It needs to be engaging. Students need to see value in what they're doing every day.
Thank you. Rita Montoya.
Thank you. Yeah, I have a third grader and a fifth grader and I definitely agree that we are in a crisis. You can look at the proficiency scores and it's very clear. You know, we can argue about whether those should be what we use to measure or not, but it is what we use to measure right now. So we definitely need to get back to the business of learning. It doesn't need to be harsh and oppressive, but we do need to have high standards and expectations and clear expectations for our kids, our families and our staff. I know that we can do that as a community. So I do think that we need to make, make sure that we're paying special attention to that. You know, providing supports in other ways is great, but.
That is everyone for this question. Over to you, Jason, for the next question.
Order. I will make this document eventually available to everyone, to candidates and, and others. So this person has several questions, but I'm going with their first one. JA says, if you support new ways to educate and enrich children, why did you close the MVA for people not currently on the Board of Education? You can say, you know, whether you support closing it or, or not, or what have you.
Great. And first will be Shebra Evans.
Sure. So I support the, I mean, I appreciate the advocacy that the parents in the Montgomery Virtual Academy have displayed to the board at a variety of meetings. You all are great partners and I am willing to stand with you all to go to the state to advocate for a virtual academy at the state level. And I just wanted to share that. And I, I do believe that what we've been able to do and try to do is talk with the parents that are.
Thank you. Next will be Lynn Harris.
Yeah, well, as Dr. Taylor has observed publicly, the board made the best decision it could with the information that was available to it at the time. Looking in the rearview mirror as we've done a deep dive and an after action, we weren't necessarily provided with the best information that we could have. As we're moving forward, though, it's all about how are we supporting those students now, especially our medically fragile students? How are we working in collaboration with other districts to ensure a robust virtual option for all students across the state who need it?
Thank you. Rita Montoya.
Thank you. It's very clear that we need a virtual academy. Now, whether that happens within MCPS in Montgomery County or at a state level, we need something. I know there's a variety of legislation and things that would need to happen at the state level in order to form that. So that's not something that could happen immediately. I know that MCPS is trying to provide something within the next, for the last nine weeks, but it doesn't seem like that's going to be adequate for the current family's needs. What we also know is that those families were not treated with respect. And that is something that I think we really need to improve in our county and with our school system because everyone deserves to be engaged respectfully. And that's not what happened with our virtual academy families.
Great. Thank you. Brenda Diaz.
Right. I mean, I would not have supported closing the MVA. I teach online, part-time as a high school and middle school social studies teacher. And so I know that there's a lot that can, lots of good learning that can take place online. But now that it's closed, we need to make sure that those families have, have access to the resources they need for those, for their children. Just as Rita said, we need to respect parents when we close these sorts of programs. And it mirrors what happened with the Darnstown Autism Program where they just closed it and parents were not respected. So we need to make sure that parental involvement is something that is a pillar for the Board of Education.
Great. Thank you to all candidates for your response. Over to you, Jason, for the next question.
Yep, we have a question from June, which is, what is the first thing you would cut from the budget and what would you, the first thing you would add to the budget?
That first question goes to Lynn Harris.
Let's see, cut from the budget. Let me think about, let me think about the other one first. What I would add to the budget would be funding to fully support the EML work happening in our schools because our newcomer students are the most rapidly growing population in MCPS. And we have failed those students for many years. We're reforming our practices now. What would I cut? I would.
Thank you. Next, Rita Montoya.
Thank you. I would cut the nearly $50,000 a month that the Board of Education is currently spending on renting new renovated space for meetings. We have amazing high schools with amazing auditoriums. Not all of them, but they can host and facilitate these meetings. There was budget meetings, budget forums last year and some of them, they went great. I went to them. We're having meetings now with our superintendent in various high schools. It's all working well. They're able to record and things there. So I wish we would have saved that money and traveled around to different high schools. I would add high impact to it.
Thank you. Brenda Diaz.
Right. So in listening in on one of the listening sessions that Dr. Taylor, Dr. Taylor held with the teachers, one of the teachers said that can we please cut the SEL programs, the social emotional learning programs at the high school level? They take away time from planning. They take away time from instruction. The students hate it. The teachers hate it. It's just dreaded across the board. When I was at Gethysburg High School, it was definitely the same. And so that's definitely something that I would cut and I would dedicate that time once again to instruction, direct instruction of our students.
Thank you. And Shebra Evans.
Sure. So through the program evaluation that the board implemented, we were able to take a look at programs through data analysis and surveying our teachers. And so instead of just arbitrarily cutting a program because we think it looks like it's not doing well, through the data analysis that Dr. Keisha Addison done, we were able to no longer do the leader and me. What we did find is that when surveying the teachers, that that wasn't something that was very useful, helpful. And not seeing the.
Great. Thank you to all candidates for your responses to that question. Over to you, Jason, for the next question.
Yep. And also, you know, I know some of these questions are hard to answer in 30 seconds. So, you know, I appreciate everyone just doing the best they can. Next question comes from Laura Siegel. With upcoming boundary studies due to future opening of Woodward High School and others, what do the candidates believe as far as redistricting students? Should we balance demographics across the county or keep community together with neighborhood schools?
Okay, maybe I'll speak slowly to give candidates a second to gather their thoughts. The first candidate will be Rita Montoya.
I'm sorry, can you just read it one more time? There was a lot there. I want to make sure that I'm responding to all of it.
Yep. So with the upcoming boundary studies due to the future opening of Woodward, Woodward High School and others, what do the candidates believe as far as redistricting students? Should we balance demographics across the county or keep communities together with neighborhood schools?
By and large, I think that families want their kids to go to school with kids that they live around, right? It fosters community. It allows our kids to play together. There are several, you know, kids around where I live where it's great. The kids, we see them on the walk, maybe on the bus, different things. So I think to the extent that we can, we want to make sure that our families can go to the schools that are in walking distance. It makes it easier for our parents and caregivers to engage. We also have schools that are underutilized. We have, thankfully, Montgomery Planning is helping to get that data out there so we can see which schools are underutilized. The other thing is that if all of our schools are good, we don't have to worry about moving.
Thank you. Brenda Diaz.
I actually really love that statement. We don't have to worry about our schools if all of them are good. So yes, definitely. So what, what would I focus on proximity? We want to maintain the character of our neighborhood schools. They should represent the community, the neighborhood of, of the people that are there, right? And so that's definitely something that I would focus on. You know, each community is unique and we want our parents to be involved. And we want to encourage that and I, that's definitely a pillar of my platform. So that's what I would focus on when it comes to the boundary issues.
Thank you. Shebra Evans.
Sure. So we had an analysis, a boundary analysis done so that when we do make decisions, we're, we're not passively making them. There are four factors that are always considered when we're doing a boundary change. That's diversity, proximity, the use of the facility, space and adjacency. And so what I take pride in is that whenever we are having a boundary study, that we're engaging our community in the conversation, but as board members, we're also where our tools are located, that we can make informed decisions.
Thank you. And Lynn Harris.
Yes, it will be an interesting and robust process because our boundary study work will encompass most of the county, given where our, we are expanding our high school capacity. And I think it's crucially important when we do this work that we, we really look to balance capacity in our schools because both under and overutilized schools cost us money that we could be spending on other things. But one of the things I'd like to see us do and in alongside the boundary analysis is a, create a strategic plan for programs to make sure all of great programs are truly geographically available to every kid.
Great. Thank you to all the candidates for your responses. Over to you, Jason, for the next community question.
Yep. So just heads up, this is a little long question again, but the last sentence is the question. So Anselon Stewart said, MCPS investments miss the kids in the middle. The lucky few get into oversubscribed advanced programs and those with the high needs. Ms. Harris mentioned are being helped, but the rest of the kids are not getting the attention they need from their teachers. So parents have to pay for outside tutoring programs. How do candidates intend to better serve the majority of students, especially with growing class sizes?
Great. And the first question goes to Brenda Diaz.
Well, I mean, I feel like a broken record. I keep saying the same thing over and over, which is, you know, we need to look at academic performance for our students. As you, they talked about the middle kids, right? So you're on level, maybe you're on honor students. Those are the kinds of children that need to get those grade level appropriate assignments. You know, we want our children to be able to read and write above grade level, obviously. And so giving them challenging material, no matter who they are, no matter where they live, no matter whatever their economic, economic circumstances is, we need to make sure that all of our students have access to those assignments.
Thank you. Shebra Evans.
Sure. Great question. Just had a principal come before the board to talk about the work that she's doing at her school specifically. I'm just mentioning this principle to give you an example of what's happening. They're really having, they're having a co-teaching model where teachers are able to sit down with their peers and really kind of go through how they're working, assisting the students and being able to tell in more real time where our students need additional help to be able to provide those supports. And so we're just trying to be creative and. Just for very early on, with our parents have to pay additional money.
Thank you. Lynn Harris.
Yeah, I think we really do need to do a better job of creating robust educational opportunities for every student. Whatever level of instruction they are ready for at, at any given time. And one of the things that I think we are working on right now that shows great promise is providing very robust instruction focused on English language development across all content levels. It's driven by our need to better serve our emergent multilingual learners, but those techniques serve every student and increase outcomes and capacity and, and abilities in all, in all students, regardless of their academic level.
Thank you. Rita Montoya.
Thank you. We need to move all students forward from where they are. That means students who need support meeting proficiency levels need to get that support. Students who are at level need to get the support to move forward and students who need enrichment or acceleration need that as well. I hear from families whose students are at level or above and, and they're just stuck. They're not. I hear from families whose students are at level or above and, and they're just stuck. They're not moving forward from where they are. Um, there's a program called When What I Need that focuses on three to four days a week of in-class, you know, 30 to 45 minutes that moves students forward from wherever they are. They can get enrichment. They can get help getting caught up. And it's a great program. We should all.
Great. Thank you to all the candidates and your responses. Over to you, Jason, for the next community question.
Yep. It's from Marshall Smith. Yes, no question. Do you support the reintroduction of S R Os into schools? Feel free to use your full 30 seconds. You don't have to just say yes or no.
Yep, that first question, first response will go to Shebra Evans.
Sure. So I think it's important to have the conversation with our community. We currently have, um, community engagement officers. Before we do anything, um, we talked about, um, being transparent before we make a decision, having a community conversation, a two-way dialogue. I think it's important that regardless of who we have in the school system, if they're S R Os or C E Os, that they have the proper chaining and that they know, um, how to build community and how to be, build relationships. But it's going to take, um, a conversation for the entire community to come together to talk about what the.
Thank you. Lynn Harris.
Uh, so generally, I would say, um, I, you know, we need our, our officers supporting our schools and our, and our, our activities and our, our school leadership. But, um, I don't know that we need them in our schools, um, full-time. And that needs to be in conjunction. And as, as Evan said, it whoever's interacting with their kids in our buildings every day needs to have the training they need to, to, to work with them at age-appropriate and developmentally appropriate levels. And, um, that, there's real harm when that doesn't happen.
Thank you. Rita Montoya.
Thank you. I do think we need to increase the, or build rather, because we don't have any much of, uh, the connection between our students and communities and law enforcement. When I go out to Law Enforcement Day or National Night Out, I see tons of families out there. When I'm out campaigning, talking to families at different events, families sometimes don't even realize that law enforcement is not in the schools. As a Native American and Mexican person, I can tell you that it's a lot of black and brown families who are saying, well, yeah, we should have them in there. We don't want them hassling our kids. We don't want them overstepping their reach. But that again goes into some of the vetting, the training and making sure that everyone knows their role and stays in their space. So I do, whether we call it S R O or C E O, um, we all are also mandated by law to have adequate law enforcement coverage and we need to take that seriously.
Thank you. And Brenda Diaz.
Yes. So I mean, I've spent a bunch of time talking to parents, you know, at different events. And one of the things that comes up when I ask them, you know, what are your concerns? What do you want to say to me about M C P S? One of the first things that pops up almost always is safety. So safety is something that parents across the board are concerned about. Doesn't matter where you come from, who you are. Um, so I do support the reintroduction of S R Os. Um, C E Os right now have an office in the high school buildings, but that's not sufficient. We know that law enforcement, uh, can build mentorships, can be mentors for our students. And so I, I would encourage those type of positive relationships with, between students and police officers.
Thank you. Uh, that, thank you for all the candidates for responding to that question. Over to you, Jason. Maybe this will be a last question and then we will go to closing statement.
Okay. Um, so last question, Caroline, uh, Pendergast. It's been 70 years since the Brown versus B O, uh, Board of Education decision, yet as recently as 2022, a segregated wing for disabled students with a separate entrance was completed on an M C pit, on M C P S comprehensive high school building. How do you envision an end to the many fully segregated M C P S special ed programs?
Thank you. And that first response will go to Lynn Harris.
Yeah, um, uh, uh, something that we've been talking a lot about lately. Um, it is so important that every student, every family, every person in our school system be treated with respect, no matter what their interaction is that day, whatever their purpose, whatever, why ever they are in a building. And when we segregate our students by ability level, that is the opposite of that. And I think that being able to provide a robust opportunity for students, whatever their ability level, is key.
Thank you. Vida Montoya.
Um, I think the first step that we can take is by listening to our students and families with these challenges. Right? Our students and families are telling us. I see them at the Board of Education meetings. I see them at the listening sessions. They email me and I engage with them as well. So, you know, these stories are not new. These aren't things that we don't know are happening, but I don't see any action being taken. So we need to listen to our families and our students. When they tell us that these things are occurring in our schools, we need to stop hiding behind policies which do sound great, but are not always being implemented within our schools so that we can take action and even include training if that's what's needed and some.
Thank you. Brenda Diaz.
So, you know, a, a lot of these special education programs and some of the other special, uh, special programs that we have, a lot of them are already present within M C P S school buildings. So I remember when I was at Gettysburg High School, we had one in particular where they had, where they served, they wouldn't graduate with the, um, M C P S diploma, but they did, you know, but they did learn and they were in the school building. So they had like a cafe in the morning and they served lunches to the teachers. So they learned a lot of essential skills. Um, I think these types of programs should be in our schools and I think they're great.
Thank you. Shebra Evans.
Yes, um, so we do want our students to feel included and a part of, um, general education classes. We did have a, um, recently, we had a student come and speak to us. So when this is brought to um, our attention, we try to make certain that we make the adjustments and make the changes that, um, fit the needs and meet the needs of our students. We do have a 211 schools and I try to do my best to get out to all of them, but it, it does, it is very helpful when our students come to us and they share what their experience is like so that we can know and, uh, make adjustments.
Great. Well, thank you so much to all of our candidates for your response to this last community question. Uh, thank you for attendees for hanging in with us until 9:00 P M. And so we want to turn it over back to our candidates for their closing statements. You will have one minute and we will reverse the opening, the order of our candidates. So first we will have Rita Montoya, then Lynn Harris, Shebra Evans, and Brenda Diaz. So over to you, Rita, for your one-minute closing statement.
Thank you. And thank you again, everyone, for being here. If you're here, I know it's because you genuinely care about our school system, our kids, our staff, and the impacts on our community and our county. Um, I do too, and that's why I'm running. I have a third and a fifth grader in M C P S schools. I need our schools to provide. My kids depend on it. So do yours. Our county depends on it. If we're going to raise leaders who continue to be prominent at the local, state, and federal levels, whether it's as elected officials, running, uh, nonprofits who are, or establishing policy across the nation and many of the other important jobs and roles that we have, then our, we need to invest in our kids. We need to make sure that they are learning, that they are reading, that they can do math and science. Our kids will not feel hopeful about their futures. Their mental health will not improve unless we do that and we show them that they have opportunities because they can achieve. So I would ask you to consider me for your next Board of Education member at large. You can learn more about me and get in touch with me at montoyaformcps.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynn Harris.
Sorry. Thank you all for being here tonight. Um, it, you wouldn't be here if you didn't care about the county, about the students of our system and about what M C P S can do to create the next generation of, of, of community leaders and, and our next generation workforce. And I share that, that priority as well. Um, I am a believer in public education. I am a believer in celebrating the good things that are working at the same time that you're fixing the things that are broken. I believe deeply that we need to get better at treating people better. I read the emails that I receive. I speak to parents and students and staff all across the county all the time. And we are in a people business. We are not good at treating people well, unfortunately, but that is work that we need to do and that I am prioritizing. I hope to continue this work as we reform our, our business practices, become a cleaner, greener school system and do our best to create the strongest school system that we possibly can.
Thank you. Shebra Evans.
Thank you to the organizers. It has been an honor and a pleasure for me to serve on the board for the past eight years. Um, I've used the, um, experience of our two daughters as well as their peers in the classroom and across the county to make the decisions that I've made on the board. I live in the Aspen Hill Glenmont area, which is one of the, um, highest poverty rates in the county. And I've used that to ensure that we, we're working with community partners to get what we need here in Montgomery County. Being able to serve on the local board as well as the state level, um, as an officer with the Maryland Association of State Boards of Education, I've been able to get that additional, um, professional development to see that here in Montgomery County that we do have the tools to continue to get better. People are looking to us as a model. And what I do appreciate is that we have a highly engaged community that is not afraid to hold us accountable, to send emails and tell us the things that we can do better. We definitely, um, I've definitely been able to, with my experience, take your, um, I look forward to you visiting my website.
Thank you. Brenda Diaz.
Well, thank you so much to the host and to everyone here that attended tonight. Um, I will be the independent voice for parents on the Board of Education. I have no, uh, ties to any special interest groups. I'm an independent running and I look forward to being an independent voice for parents on the board. I will also be the teacher voice on the board. I have my own educational program and I teach part-time online. That's not going to stop. So I will represent teacher interests while serving on the board. I also, as a teacher and as a parent of a student now within M C P S, I will make sure that we build agency within our students because I know that, that when they are challenged, that they will meet that challenge with parental involvement. And I'm going to continue encouraging parental involvement. Parents are key to the success of our children and I will respect that while serving on the board. If you'd like to donate to my campaign, um, please go to diazforboe.com. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you again to all of our candidates, uh, for coming today. Again, the candidates that we are so grateful you attended. We have at-large, uh, candidate Rita Montoya, at-large candidate Lynn Harris, District Two, Shebra Evans, and District Two, Brenda Diaz. Thank you again for everyone for attending and hopefully enjoy the rest of your evening. Uh, this debate will, has been recorded and available for you to replay as you go to the polls in November. Thank you and have a good evening. Bye.
Thank you. Bye.